Chairman, will you call the roll?
Excuse me, sir, the, the, the meeting is recorded. There's no need to videotape. I would prefer to have my own copy, thank you.
Tim Dean, Mark Doyle.
Yeah.
Kathy Bauer.
Here.
Jamie Bonideri. Jim Piccon.
Here.
Don Sagliano.
Here.
Al Torjani.
Here.
Great. Now, um, are there any conflict of interest disclosures? I think we're all clear today. And the proof of meeting notice went out?
Yes.
Yes. And are there any bills and communications?
No.
All right. Uh, and then I would ask for approval of the minutes of the last meeting, April 12.
I make the motion.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, let's call the roll on that.
Kathy Bauer, approved. Jim Piccon.
Approved.
Don Sagliano.
Approved.
Al Torjani.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved. Thank you. Jane, report of the treasure.
Um, that was recorded in place. Reading.
Right, so we don't have any more information on that. Very good. And then.
Uh, excuse me, uh, acting chairman. Jane, where are we at with the annual audit and stuff? Done and filed and the.
The, our annual audit, that, that was already.
And everything's done and we filed with the state.
According to this.
You're all good.
Okay.
Yes, everything was considered March 31st.
Thank you, acting chairman.
And there are no reports of any committees today. And, uh, no unfinished business. I take it as well, I'll get through.
Okay.
All right. So, um, for a new business today, the first item is a consideration of the approval and final authorization resolution. Do you want to list it again? For the Mirbo program at in Beacon. To approve project providing for a mortgage tax exemption, sales tax exemption and pilot. Good morning, good morning.
Could you sit down, Sharon?
Sit down, yeah.
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Kellogg. We're meeting, I know, I think you may know Sarah is, um, sick. Tim Dean is traveling, so I'm Mark Doyle, I'm standing in aside. So, I wonder, Sarah, would you lead off with updating us where we are right now?
Sure, so, as you said, Mark, this is the final authorizing approval for this project. Mirbo is proposing to invest about $73 million to re-adapt and reuse the former Howland estate, also known as Crick House, into an 85-room spa. The public hearing was held on April 10th. The transcript, excuse me, the transcript and written comments were forwarded to the board. Ed Kellogg is here to answer any further questions the board may have on this project. At the preliminary meeting, Ed and Jonathan Del Po gave a detailed presentation of the project. But if there's any other questions?
Very good. Thank you. Don, do you, you look like you have a comment?
No, it's just the final resolution has been sent to you, right for your approval.
Very good. Any questions or comments from any members of the board? We have, of course, I know you've all seen various comments from the public comments during the course of events. I think that in our last meeting and the end adjustment, we talked at some length about the assessment of the pilot. And, you know, it seemed like the most detailed substantial comments were on that, on that subject. And I think there are aspects that the IDA is party to and other aspects that we're not party to. And we're not, we're not part of the negotiation team for pilots. So.
Excuse me. So, um, Council Capolino, could you just touch on, on the page three of seven, whereas where it speaks about the pilot and what that process is and how the local municipalities work to effort that and have that come to fruition?
I can, I can answer, so.
Well.
It applies either. So pursuant to the uniform tax exemption policy of the agency, the taxing jurisdictions are given notice of the request for the deviated pilot. And in addition, this board, although the approval of the school district and the town is not required, this board typically looks to have some form of consent from the, the taxing jurisdictions. And so we have letters that were circulated with the application that indicated that the, the town and the school district were in favor of the project. And so they've seen our proposed lease agreement and the proposed pilot schedule that, that we've drafted here.
I both school district and the city of Beacon have signed onto it?
Yes.
Oh, great. Mr. Kellogg, are there any additions that you'd like to make? We welcome you here today.
No, no, we're just getting ready to draft the construction, you know, starting this summer sometime. For the summer 25 opening. And we're in the final stages of our design. A few more weeks will be the building permit.
Very good. So you are in the midst of planning board activities.
The planning board, we're, we finished that last December.
Oh, all right.
They approved the resolution and actually, Mr. Chairman Don signed the site plans and the subdivision last, last week.
Excellent. So poised to go. Very good. So I think we are ready to take a vote unless anybody has something to say.
I have something to say.
Chairman, would you? Oh, I would, we absolutely need a motion, don't we? Thank you.
Shall I have something to say?
Could someone make, make a motion?
No, I think we have to make a motion.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, second.
Thank you, Jamie, thank you, Don. And, all right. Now, uh, we can take any further comments after this, but I don't think we have, we have a public comment component. At this thing, at this point, we're going to take a vote. Hello. We are.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry I'm late.
That's okay. Let me just update you where we are. We're, we have a motion on the table for the approval of the Mirbo.
Okay.
Project. A motion and a second. Just about to take, take the vote.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Kathy Bauer, approved. Jamie Bonideri.
Approved.
Jamie Piccon.
Approved.
Don Sagliano.
Approved.
Al Torjani.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
Approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the next item is the, it's a little complicated in that it's bifurcated. The consideration of a preliminary resolution for Tompkins Terrace Housing in Beacon, City of Beacon, to induce their project, in this case, for providing sales and use tax exemption for a project of about $43.6 million that they're rehabilitating the football housing complex, 193 units. So, Don, who's leading on this project or?
Yes.
Maybe, or let's, maybe Sarah can sort of headline it and we'll start like that.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, Tompkins Terrace is a 193-unit rental income subsidized garden-style housing development in the city of Beacon. The property was originally built in 1973 and has been owned and operated by related management companies since 2018. Related Affordable hopes to use, um, the LDC tax exempt bond and the more, and well, through the LDC, the tax exempt bond and the mortgage tax exemption, but through the IDA sales tax exemptions to, for, to go towards the renovation of the property. To ensure the continuation of the property as a low to moderate income housing development. The development is 50 years old and has only undergone minor renovations since 28, since 2008, under the previous owner. The project will also have a pilot, which has been separately negotiated directly with the city of Beacon. The project is, um, supported by the city of Beacon. I am going to defer to Don and Liz about the structure of the deal because that's a relatively new development. But originally, they were going to come through the IDA for the tax exempt bond, which required us, required the Dutchess County IDA to request an approval for an increase in their bond allocation, which we did not receive until May 12th.
I just wanted to take a moment to welcome to our meeting Justin Glander, who's on the Zoom screen. And is there anybody else? I'm not, it's not clear from my notes who else is frankly with your organization, but I think that's it, right?
Uh, we, we do have two folks on from KeyBank Capital Markets, Sam Adams, Managing Director, and then Alex Stettler, both on from, from our bond underwriting firm that can speak to the structure or any other financing questions.
I don't see Mr. Adams.
We see Alexander, but.
Which 16.
Uh, there are other people on the call. Okay, very good. Well, welcome to you all and.
Is there any way to get both of them on the screen?
Is there, if, if anybody's, um, we, we like when people are participating. I think it's actually a rule for them to be visible on the screen, if that's possible.
Certainly, I will get on in one second, I'm telling you. And I'll be on in just one second.
All right. Now, um, Don, Liz, do you want to go ahead and say that stuff?
Yeah. This particular project came in as an IDA application. Upon review with bond counsel, it became clear it was more advantageous for them to come through with the bond issuance via the LDC. And so, uh, we were moving forward with this as though we can bifurcate this. And the LDC cannot bring sales tax exemptions, the IDA can. So we move forward with the IDA portion of this for the purpose of providing a sales tax exemption. And this is just a preliminary resolution to start the process. And the second part of it is, with later meeting with the LDC, the bond, you know, the bond issuance would be part of that. There's nothing to do as far as the property tax issue, but we do grant a mortgage tax exemption as well on the LDC side.
Right. May I just clarify this? The, your statement of there's nothing to do with the assessment and the property tax, and that is because?
It's tax exempt.
Via the city of Beacon. Right. Right. And their process. Okay, very good. Now, um, I wonder if the applicants could just run us through the, the project and the property, you know, from your, your point of view?
Uh, sure, happy to. I will try to keep it brief and then can take any questions. Good morning to all of you. Thank you for making the time this morning for a special meeting. I'm Justin Glander with Related Affordable, subsidiary entity of the Greater Related Companies, New York-based development firm, right out of the city, so just south of you. We are a very active player nationally in the development and preservation of existing affordable housing projects. Our business actually specializes, our, our portion of the Greater Related Companies specializes in doing solely that. So we go out and, and look to acquire and come into controlling assets that are in need of renovations, in need of proper management, that are in need of resources to be arranged and backed and guaranteed in order to proceed with one of these large-scale rehabilitations as, as was proposed in our applications to the LDC and the IDA regarding the, the exemptions and financing required to make this property go forward. So we came into control a few years ago. We have been managing this asset within the, the rental restrictions and, and budget that we have in preparation for this event, this capital event, which is a refinancing into a, a, a long-term preservation of the affordability of the project for at least next 40 years, a, as well as completing about $15 million of improvements to the property. For those that aren't familiar, it's located right there on the Hudson River, about a half mile from the train station and about a five to 10-minute walk from downtown Beacon. It's very well positioned. It's actually a very true mixed-income community of sorts. It has a rental subsidy layer for about a third of the property and then it has two bands of affordability under the low-income housing tax credit program, which is how it was previously financed. One at a 50% area median income band and another at a 60% area median income. We're proposing to maintain all that. We're maintaining the rental subsidy that exists on the project today, which comes from the Beacon Housing Authority in town. We work closely with them on that portion of, of the affordability that's in place at the property. And we'll be looking to, to carry that on as well. As far as the renovations go, we'll be in 100% of the units. We'll be doing upgrades in kitchens, baths, unit interiors, full upgrades. Some of the materials that we submitted to date to the city of Beacon and even the IDA includes some renderings which are available if, if they're desired, as well as some example videos of some of our other end result products in, in local markets and nationally. I believe this is a great project. It's, it's much needed for the city of Beacon as, as that town continues to progress and, and become an attractive location for employment, for, for residents. A true mixed-income community like Tompkins Terrace is, is necessary. And it's one that could frankly go obsolete in, in the, um, in the next five to 10 years or so and not be able to properly benefit the community. You know, a lot of the conversation nationally these days is about building new, but it is, it's really just important, just as important to sustain the old housing stock that exists. Otherwise, these units will, will offset against your, your new construction count. As, as Ms. Lee stated, it's a 50-year-old structure today with limited improvements to date from prior to our involvement. A lot of the components of the building, mechanicals, windows are original to the site. And the roofs need to be redone. A, a lot of those components, the non-glamorous components need to be redone, which we'll be addressing in our, our scope of work. With that, I'll pause and I can take any, any specific questions. Thank you.
Most certainly, thank you. So, I guess, um, two distinct components. One is the real estate holiday and the mortgage and the other is the renovation. I, I guess, for myself, I would like to ask about the, the real estate value. And I guess what you're doing is rebonding for the, not, for the full value of the real estate and the additional for the renovations. So, um, in terms of the, the real estate, you have your, your numbers in your application. I see the, I, I, I'm not sure entirely, this, when, when we're doing bonding, the, the, the component that's for the real estate value versus the actual renovations, are they separated? Or is it all lumped as one?
No, they, no, they could all be, um, all be part of the financing that, that's involved. So the financing includes security on the entire project. The lenders will require that. And so that's what's being pledged as part of it. And so, uh, that's, that's the way this is structured. I mean, I think it's typical structure and circumstances. The important part here is that because of the type of housing involved, it would qualify for IDA bonding. But because IDAs have limited amount of bonds that they can issue, there's limited types of bonds. But this would be one of them because of the type of housing under the Internal Revenue Code. And it's something that the IDA could do. However, it's more advantageous to go through the LDC. So that's where, that's where the bonding will take place and the, and the pledging of the property as part of security for the bonding. This part of it here before the IDA right now is solely about the sales tax exemption that they're looking for in order to purchase the construction.
I understand that. I just think that, you know, we're looking at the whole project and, and might as well start at the beginning of that in the discussion.
Sure.
Yeah. And so, so very good. I kind of skipped over perhaps the, from a procedural point of view, the most important issue. And I think there might be some questions like that. And that is, you know, the timing of this application, the fact that we've been brought this to, brought this to a special meeting. Is there, can, can we have further clarification about the need for this timing?
Uh, sure. This is, uh, this is Justin again. So we are hoping to, to close on this recapitalization and the new financing for the work to be done this summer. As soon as possible, we are in, obviously with IDA and the LDC here. We're also in with the New York State HFA for quite a bit, now on a tax credit application. So we'll be re, re, recapitalizing with, with low-income housing tax credits again, which is noted in our application, it pairs with the tax exempt bond. So for, for the, you know, the first need, if you will, is in order to qualify for the, the low-income housing tax credits to, to be utilized and marshaled in the project. It's a federal requirement that tax exempt bonds be issued in connection with that. Up to 50% of the aggregate basis must be bond financed. And so we are in a, at a point where we cannot proceed with our, with our tax credit application and getting that finalized until we have a, a bond inducement arranged for the project. So that's one. And then as far as timing goes, a lot of the, we, for the tax credits, we are bringing in KeyBank. Key Community Development Corporation is going to be a, a partner of ours, an investor. And Sam Adams from KeyBank is, is also helping on the, the bond underwriting side. But KeyBank will be the lender and investor. In order to hit certain, you know, timing requirements for them, we'll have to complete the construction in, in a certain amount of time so that the, the low-income housing tax credits can such be delivered to the investor in line with, with our collective expectations. To the extent that that cannot happen, there, there would be a financial deficit or loss to the project, which just makes it more difficult to finance as we continue to push out. So that, that would be the second reason.
And to supplement that, as it was in the way that this project has been spoken about for a while. But because the bond, if this exceeds our volume, of volume, volume bond cap, we, we have to apply to New York State to have the excess volume cap that they have applied to this particular project. And they did so on May 12th. And that's why, and since we were having the special meeting, Sarah thought we could then just present this at this time only for the preliminary. And the way it's structured now, the volume cap was toward the IDA's portion of this. But we understand that we, and we'll be subject to that on the LDC side, that, that there'll have to be an assignment of that volume cap excess to the LDC side. So we think then, uh, proceed. That's, will be a contingent matter if, if we won't do the final resolution as soon as, until that's taken care of.
Right. So the, the original discussions on this project started when? In March or something like that?
I think a little bit before then, but by March 3, they submitted an application. But we didn't know if we would have the volume cap excess applied to, to this particular project. And, and there was a weight on that, but that's finally approved.
Very good. All right. Now, members of the board, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Could you explain the ownership structure to me, please? I see on the application that it says KeyBank's going to own 99.99% of the applicant, with the applicant being Tompkins Terrace Housing LP. Is that correct? And then explain, if it is correct, why would a bank the size of KeyBank need our help?
So, so the 99, it is correct. The 99.99% is allocated to KeyBank as the investor, as they will be the, the, they're essentially investing in the low-income housing tax credit allocation. And that will, that will now be brought to the project. So we are raising money against that award of tax credits that, that has come to, that is coming to the property.
But are they owning the company? Because it says that they're going to own it, not just the best.
They will be a, yes, they will be a, an ownership interest. They will be a limited partner, however. Related Affordable as an upper-tier entity in the, in the organizational structure will be the controlling entity or the general partner. So we, you know, we'll make the day-to-day decisions. We're the sponsor of, of the development. We'll be running the construction to be associated with, you know, the project as well as operating it during and after construction. So they, they truly are a limited partner in the, in the development.
And Justin, for, for what it's worth and for the, for the board's context, that is the legal structure of effectively every 4% low-income housing tax credit ownership structure in the country, regardless of state or anything else. It's just the, all tax credit investors, structured deals, nearly identical, as Justin mentioned, 99.9% limited partnership ownership stake. And that's so they can receive the tax credits in exchange for contributing equity into the deal.
And I'll jump into with regards to the, the help portion. KeyBank as equity investor won't, or wouldn't receive tax credits for under the 4% low-income housing tax credit program without tax exempt bonds, which is where the, the Dutchess County IDA and the LDC come into play.
Yeah, it's a tax exemption and the tax credits that they're able to, that's allocated, that makes it affordable to the general partner here to do this and they can make it happen. And they need this part of it in order to get. And they need this part of it in order to get the tax credits to be applied so that they can get the lower in interest rates and make it affordable to do the project.
So so I guess to round off that discussion, Key Bank, Key Community Development Corporation will be investing as part of this. They will be investing 15 to 16 million dollars into the development in order to finance the renovations that we're proposing to undertake. Without their investment, the the project would not be able to proceed.
Counsel really explained like what Kathy brought up about the 99.99% that is Key Community Development and Key Bank is 99.99% and the general partner is Thomas and what are they 0.01%?
Yep.
It's kind of confusing.
Yeah, well, the general partner runs the project. They're the ones who are trying to make this happen. And you think of it along the lines of Key Bank loaning the money, you know, leaving the money out, they're not going to do it unless they get a return and they get, in this case, they can loan at low interest rates because they will then get
The tax credit.
The tax credits. This is all about tax credit. The only time the IDA in my history here, and it's been a while, is that we did this. We did this before in Baby South Terrace and Beacon, and it may have been before most most of you, but we did the same same thing we've done before. It's not like we haven't done them. But there's not a lot of this kind of low income housing in Dutchess County. So there's a big call for this. This project has been around since the early 70s, and so this is just reflected in the place.
So Don Sagliano has a question.
I have several.
I just want to so just in in general terms, because this is, you know, we're asking questions because we're not that familiar with the setup. So we have affordable housing, and in order to make it affordable, A, we are understanding the tax credit component, but other and the property tax component as well, obviously. Is there another component that also that, you know, may not know about is essentially subsidizing the project besides those?
Or credits from, like Paul Hopeford doing affordable?
I'm sorry.
Low income. She's got a bunch of money that she's talking about distributing for this reason to low income housing projects. So has that been looked into? Are they going to get that or are they going to just weave the possibility of getting that money?
No, I I don't know any of that. That's the applicant's answer, but essentially, you know, these these are long existing tax credits that have been available. There've been some variations over the years, but essentially, it's it's similar to what was done in Baby South Terrace by the IDA years ago.
Okay. All right. Don Sagliano.
Who currently owns the property? Full name of the entity, please.
The name of the entity that currently owns the property?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
It's 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 a dual structure. Actually, there's a ground lease component. It's Tompkins Terrace, Inc. is the landowner, and then the improvements are owned by Tompkins Terrace Preservation LP. Both are controlled by Related Affordable. And that's it.
Okay.
I was just going to speak to the other question, which I think I caught a little bit of. My my apologies, but it was a question about the subsidies available. We aren't using any other soft funds or housing trust funds or other loans from the city or the IDA that were maybe mentioned or alluded to. This is just a tax exempt bond request, which is required in connection with raising low income housing tax credits. So that would be the other that would be the second source is is the tax credits plus the the bond financing. And then there is the there is the subsidy contract from the Beacon Housing Authority, Ron Trout, and and the jurisdiction there runs that housing authority. We've been working with him. That's not so much a capital source though for the project. That is just a, you know, an operating contract, so to speak, where certain residents who qualify can can benefit under that voucher program, similar to to any other housing choice voucher program. It's not too different. It's just a contract that's tied directly to Tompkins Terrace. So that would be another federal subsidy source, if you will. And I'm sorry, I interrupted the gentleman's second question.
So who's the actual owner of the real property currently?
It's a special purpose entity. Again, Tompkins Terrace, Inc. and Tompkins Terrace Preservation LP. And in the application, we Related Affordable create a new special purpose entity that the reason being, you know, for legal protections, you need a clean entity, so to speak, that that doesn't have any other investments or holdings or assets. And so the new applicant is this Tompkins Terrace Housing LP, which would which would own the improvements. Again, it's it is still controlled ultimately by the Related Affordable as the general partner.
So Tompkins Terrace Housing LP will be the future owner of the real estate? Okay, so then why in section E on the application, the answer was entered as no for a holding company to own the project facility?
My understanding.
That's on page nine of the application, item A.
So my understanding of real estate holding company in this, as using this definition from from our legal counsel, this is not applicable. If if I'm incorrect there, misspeaking, someone please please state so. But that's my understanding. We certainly can look into that again and revert, but I don't think that type of
Counsel?
Name is applicable.
Well, it it it's really the Tompkins Housing, Tompkins Terrace Housing, G P LLC, is the is really an operating company. They'll hold it, but they're operating.
Okay, so the fact that that information wasn't duplicated with the tax ID and everything's not listed, although in in my my opinion, it is a holding company because it's being held in somebody's ownership, needless to say, that's okay. So the related companies have owned this property since 2018. Is that correct?
That's that's accurate.
Okay, so what have you been doing with the property for the last five years that all of a sudden now we want to go and create a new syndicate and sell low income housing tax credits? Why the five year lag? Why is this time? What has the company been doing in that? Has the company made any repairs, maintenance, improvements to any of the physical plant or facilities there at Tompkins Terrace?
Sure. So we've we have, I would say, we've been operating it very well since 2018. I think we were a great improvement over the prior owner, which was a group called Aimco, which was a national REIT that's now exited the business. They were not super well known for their management of these these holdings. We had a number of residents speak to that effect at some of the hearings held with the city of Beacon, and I think, you know, Sarah Lee might be able to to speak to that if she's has any of those notes. Otherwise, we could provide some references in that respect. But we had three or four residents speak throughout the course of those hearings, very positive in the respect, you know, that we we turn units properly when when folks move in, obviously very decent, safe sanitary housing, as the HUD kind of guidance would would spell out for you. We have made a lot of improvements across the site, including some sump pump repairs, drainage repairs across the site that have been much needed, you know, among other upgrades to the management offices as well as the community room. But it's all been limited in in scope. You know, we do it out of what's called a capital reserve budget, as a capital expenditure. As to the question of why now? So the property is is actually now eligible for a a re-syndication of this variety. The the way the use agreements go is a the property is currently affordable, of course, but parts of the requirements and the agreements expire. And eventually in time and in a number of years, they would expire completely. But at this point in time, the property, Tompkins Terrace, is eligible for new resources to to recapitalize it, to bring these improvements of this scale. And the low income housing tax credit program in connection with the taxes and bonds is is actually one of the only programs out there, if not the only program out there to to create, to complete rather, a a project of this scale, to bring 15 million dollars of renovation all at once, where the money has to be spent all in, you know, 12 to 18 months on a timeline. Now, that can't be accomplished through any other program. It's difficult, especially this type of property, to go just refinance. Otherwise, you would never be able to raise that much in capital to to complete the improvements because the rents are restricted. That that's what makes it affordable. We can only rent to certain certain residents, certain tenants. We can only charge certain rents across the property depending on what type of of unit the the household is in. So, you know, why now? This this is a property that is aging. It's one that could easily, again, become obsolete. 50 plus years old now with a lot of original components. We are hoping to revitalize the asset as part of the downtown Beacon neighborhoods and and bring it into its full strength.
And what is the role of the Beacon Housing Authority with regards to this project? Or they're not on call, are they? We don't have representatives for Beacon Housing? No? Okay.
So they they are the counterparty of, and I'm glad you asked the question. So they are the counterparty to a project based voucher contract, which covers 61 of the units of the 193 units at the property, 61 benefit under this under this contract tied to the asset. And again, Beacon Housing Authority is the counterparty. And so one of one of the things that that we have done, actually, I was involved in in 2020, is, as I had mentioned, you know, there's always parts of the affordability regime that are in effect on on these types of properties that are falling off or expiring. So one, in this case, one was a program called Section 236, which is a legacy HUD financing program dated back to how the the property was originally financed in the 70s or 80s. And it was it stayed on all that time. It eventually expired and expiring, it put a a certain amount of residents at risk of of a rent increase. And we instead, in in the spirit of maintaining the affordability and and not, you know, having not having a reason or cause for there to be displacement of households at the site, which is not something we want. Residents have been there a long time. We went out to the Beacon Housing Authority and worked with them and HUD and the PIH office to enter into this protection agreement. It's it's actually it's a it's a project based voucher agreement, but it's actually also known as the tenant protection voucher program. And so this was voucher subsidy that was placed with 61 households that were deemed most at risk, which meant that they did not benefit from any other subsidy. They were at risk of a significant rent increase, and they were already paying more than 30% of their household income towards rent. And the Beacon Housing Authority did an evaluation unit by unit for 100% of the apartments at Tompkins Terrace and was able to determine with us that 61 were eligible for this program that was tied to the expiration of this 236 program. And then we brought that we brought that assistance to the property to keep all those households in place. So that's that's the only involvement is mainly as a voucher operator and the the counterparty on that contract.
Is there is there any reason that they would have to consent to this project to preserve the low income this voucher program? Is there?
There's a separate project enforceable separately from any of this.
Okay. And could you just, and maybe the the people from Key Capital Markets, just explain these tax credits, how one would acquire them as a as a potential investor and what their tax credits may may look like, please?
Alexander, you need to unmute yourself or we need.
You're muted.
Yes, I don't have the ability to unmute. Thank you. So, yeah, so the tax credit, so I'm from Key Bank Capital Markets, which is not, be clear, is not the tax credit investor of the project. The tax credit investor is Key Community Development Corporation, which is a separate arm of Key Bank. We are from the broker dealer portion of the bank that is not involved in the tax credits in any way. That being said, Key Bank as an entity, Key Community Development Corporation, benefits from the tax credits by helping its CRA rating under the Community Reinvestment Act. Key Bank is obviously one of the largest lenders in New York State, has one of the highest branch counts in the region, especially in Hudson Valley. So sort of being a tax credit investor to an affordable project like Tompkins Terrace helps its community to reinvestment score, and it also benefits from twofold. So obviously, one of the tax credit benefits for the Community Reinvestment Act, and then it also benefits from the degree the asset that it all that the Tompkins Terrace asset as itself. So it takes the tax losses and helps its its overall tax liability as a banking organization. So as Justice stated earlier, 50% of the tax credit basis of the project called depreciable costs is sort of is eligible for tax credits, and then Key Community Development Corporation will fund in installments of equity, you know, when it closing, if then where certain milestones are hit to help the project come to fruition. Justin, I'll defer to you if there's anything I missed there.
No, I thought that was great. Thanks, Alex, if there are further questions, though, please.
Yeah, well, how much is the tax credit? How much is the tax credit? How is it calculated? What can a downstream investor expect to receive as a as a downstream investor in this program? You know, Related Companies is one of the largest real estate companies in the world. I appreciate that, you know, in order for the project to go through, it requires taxes and financing, but what does a downstream, what can a downstream investor receive in terms of the tax credits? Is it 10%? 20%? Is it a federal credit, state credit?
It's there's no there's no state tax credits. It's just the federal low income housing tax credit that's being employed here. So so to be clear, there's no, call it state budget impact, if you will, under the under the program. It's a it's a federal Section 42 IRC, which is the Internal Revenue Code program that's that's leveraged. It's actually one of the most efficient means of financing affordable housing nationwide. It's it's used very frequently. The the credit amount is about 1.5 million a year. I think these are included in in the application. If not, you know, figures could could likely be made available. The calculations are just based on the basis figures that that are in the application, as Alex mentioned. The return, I I don't want to speak for our partner, Key Bank, Key Community Development Corporation specifically. You know, Alex, I don't know, you know, what would make sense to share, but usually for the for the individual asking, these returns for for investors range in the 4%, 5%, 6% yield, which, you know, for the amount of risk that's being taken is is actually low, I would say. The reason it's done is for what Alex had mentioned, banking organizations such as Key Bank are required under the Community Reinvestment Act, which is also a federal law, to deploy a certain amount of dollars each year in communities in which they have presence both. presence, both, both physical presence branches and online. And so they make these investments and loans in order to, you know, score on, and I don't know all these details because I'm not a banker, but to score properly-
Perhaps maybe you want the people from KeyBank to speak, since they're the 99.9 limited partner in this, and they're obviously the ones that are going to benefit from the sale of these syndicated ownership rights downstream to their institutional and high net worth individuals. Let your limited partner speak to it if you're not, you know, sophisticated enough to explain it to our board here.
Sure, so I'll be clear, I'm not the limited partner. I'm part of the broker-dealer who is selling the tax exempt bonds. The limited partner is not on the call right now.
Oh, the limited partner's not on the call? Okay.
Otherwise, I defer.
You said that the tax credits are $1.5 million a year?
Correct.
And is that every year?
It's for, it's for 10 years is the duration they're legally taking over.
So the downstream investors are going to get a $15 million tax credit, federal funds, taxpayer money? Okay? It's taxpayer's money. Everybody in the room, everybody out on the highway here, taxpayer money. So these downstream investors are basically going to get a $15 million tax credit. So if they're in the 40% federal tax bracket, that means they're getting a benefit of close to $50 million for a project that's not even, a project that's not even worth $50 million.
I'm not quite sure how you landed on the 50 million, I think you heard. But, but to be clear, the $15 million benefit is offset by KeyBank is coming out of, you know, their funds and investing $15 million in your county, in the City of Beacon, in this project. So yes, they're getting a $15 million tax write-off, call it, but they're putting $15 million in, that's a zero-for-zero wash. Their return, you know, I'm not the banker, I'm not their investor, but the return is very low on this project. It's probably lower than the four I cited earlier. It's probably three or two, which, again, they do that because of the CRA need, federal law requirement. You know, but you have to have some level of return that's non-zero in order for a bank to want to make an investment of any variety. If there's no return, there's no capital deployment, there's no dollars spent, there's no employment, there's no jobs.
Correct, so the tax credits are not just free, you know, the tax credits are not just, they're getting the benefit. You know, at closing, Key Community Development Corporation is going to put a significant amount of money into the project, and then throughout the stages of the project installment itself, Key Community Development Corporation will put money into the project. It will not, you know, as Justin said, it'll be very close to a one-for-one basis. So that helps the, you know, their return, and then along with the depreciation of the asset on its books, that's how Key Community Development Corporation, as the LP, will arrive at its, you'd call it 4% to 5% or 6%, whatever IRR it would be over the life of the project.
Okay. Thank you. I'm still not satisfied, Mr. Chairman. Sorry. It's my time.
It is your time.
Yeah, thank you. So I realize you're trying to explain this to me, but if downstream investors are going to get a $15 million federal tax credit, right? That's what you said, one and a half million dollars a year for 10 years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so then-
Total.
Total, $15 million. So a $15 million tax credit, federal tax credit, if somebody is in the, you know, the current tax rates are 33%, 34%, could be as high as 39%. Who knows what's going to happen? So let's just say, make the math easy, a $15 million tax credit, if somebody's in the 33% tax bracket, is going to allow them to shelter $45 million worth of tax, federal taxable income. That's 45% times a third is $15 million. Over the course of 10 years, obviously, there's a time value of money, right? So, so you're offering that, you're selling, some entity, Key Corp., whatever it is, is going to sell syndicated shares in another special purpose entity to high net worth individuals and high-income individuals in order to shelter income. Is that, is that what the, is that what the eventual facts will be?
So I would, again, we don't have the limited partner on the call. The KeyBank organization is a, while it is a subsidiary organization of the Greater KeyBank Corp., which is a publicly traded bank, it's a, it's, you know, a banking company in National Association, I'm not sure how they refer to themselves, but they would plan to hold this investment, you know, for the foreseeable future. I'm not aware of any reason they would syndicate it out. They would take, take the tax credits against banking income.
Okay.
So this is not like a typical private equity type transaction?
Okay, right. We were-
It's the bank investing, just like they would make a loan, you know, think about it like this, a KeyBank makes a loan to an office building, I mean, maybe not office because office isn't doing too great, but makes a loan to a strip mall in town. They would tack an interest rate on that of six or seven or whatever yields dictate today, and they would hold that loan and earn that yield or return over, over the life of the loan. It's similar in this respect in that KeyBank is making an investment off their books, they're deploying out of their, you know, call it bank coffers, $15 million, $16 million, almost dollar for dollar against this future benefit, which you noted the time value of money component. So that is that their deficit, they're investing $15 million today, they're getting return of 1.5 a year over 10 years. So that 1.5 in year 10 is worth a lot less than the 1.5 that they're putting up today as part of the 15, so to speak. And each year is, you know, years one through nine are discounted as well. So there is that component of return too, that is at their deficit.
Yeah, and just the last thing, Mr. Chairman, if you'll ask. In the application, it currently lists the jobs on site. So there's no intent to have any future full-time equivalents other than the current total five at this particular point in time as we move forward?
No, we plan to maintain the existing staffing at the, at the property. There would be no need necessarily to increase staffing. The property runs very well under the current staffing program with the five employees. And then there's, I think, some janitorial help as well, but that's outsourced. It's really the construction jobs that would be temporarily created over the next 12 to 18 months to, to complete the work.
One more question.
Just one second.
I'm good, thank you. Back to you, Chairman Doyle.
I see on the application that the current estimated value of the property is 9.7 million. And then it says after completion, it's unknown. And then it says the current property taxes are zero. So did you do an as completed appraisal? Do we know what the value of the property is going to be and what the anticipated taxes would be once the project is completed?
Yeah, so there's, there's a, the reason it says zero under current property taxes is there is a existing pilot that is related to how the property was originally built under a UDC Corp. back in the 70s. That pilot has been in place since, since its inception. You know, all pilot payments have been made to date, paid as due. This was a heavily negotiated process with the City of Beacon. So what we, what we did was we went to the city. I myself went up to about half dozen different hearings and city council meetings. We renegotiated the existing pilot, basically restructured it such that it would continue in connection with this preservation transaction. It would continue for the next 40 years. And that new agreement would also require specific affordability restrictions, which mirror those that would come about under our other documents with the tax exempt bonds, per se, and as well as the tax credits. So they all align. The city wanted to have the restrictions baked into the actual pilot itself. The lender, I think, is doing an appraisal. I don't have that information at this time. But again, the, I guess, post-completion value wouldn't matter so much as the fact that there is a pilot, both existing and future, it will maintain and continue. And to the extent this transaction didn't happen, the current tax exemption, the current pilot would still continue as well.
Very good. Wasn't the pilot a percentage of revenue at one point to the city?
It is currently a percentage of revenue. It's called a gross shelter rent, and it is actually split with the city, the county, the school district, and the library. And that split will continue under the new structure, though. So the payments going to the city, while they collect the payment directly, I believe is how we'll structure it, they would split that up under the same apportionment, which is to them and the county and the library and school district.
That's not a typical pilot then, right?
No, but it's not, we're not involved.
Right, yeah. I don't find it too. Very good. Sarah, did you have anything to add to summarize or to go further?
You know, I just want to remind the board that this is a preliminary. So there are opportunities for additional information that if the board didn't, you know, wants additional information from the applicant, that there is still time for the board to do that, and the applicant can provide information to me, and I can distribute that to the board.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I'll see if there's a motion in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark. Is that, it is, you know, the project, it has, has the support from the City of Beacon, you know, to, for this project and for the request of the applicant of the IDA.
Right. John, counsel.
Yeah, the document before you on the resolution, on page two, paragraph A, second where I, there are just some minor mistakes. You apparently didn't get the later version of that, but it's just to take out the two brackets around AKA 194 Tompkins Terrace, and then insert description of building that follows. So if you take out those clauses, that would be, yes, would be presented as, as the preliminary resolution.
All right. So we are going to go ahead with a preliminary resolution or for a preliminary resolution? And I'm just going to say, as presented by counsel, removing the AKA 194 Tompkins Terrace section. And so I will take a motion in a second.
What are we exactly voting on, just to change the language?
Well, we're going to vote on the resolution-
Okay.
-to make a preliminary injunction.
Okay.
And we're going to, with that resolution, remove the language that was just explained.
Okay.
Somebody to make the motion.
Again, I need somebody to make the motion in a second. So nobody's going to make the motion? I can't make the motion as a chair?
Guess we got a problem.
We have a problem. I don't actually know that we have. I haven't chaired in this circumstance, so.
All right, I'll make the motion, and whether it gets voted up or down, that's the-
I'll make a second.
It's at the purview of the board.
Then we can vote.
There we go. Thank you. Let's go ahead and I'll take a roll, please, Justice.
Kathy Bower?
Against.
Amy Von De Derry?
Against.
James Picone?
Against.
Don Siblano?
No.
Al Toregiani?
Against.
Four, approved. Sorry, this motion is failed. Not sure that there's any further business at this point. That will affect the next meeting, the receipts. But I think at this point, if we are pushed with the IDA, we will adjourn the IDA.